I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Want to welcome everyone to our November 20th meeting. Had to stop and look at the date on the packet. Things are moving so fast. And please note, Mr. Bucknight is absent. Okay, items from council. I have a couple. You want me to... Oh, go ahead, Ms. ...
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Amen. Amen. You bet.
Christmas is almost here, guys.
It is. It is. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Buck.
I was not at... I don't know where to look. I never do. I was not at the last meeting, but I watched the tape of it, and I think we're going to dis... It was proposed that there would be some discussion and some options on sidewalks brought to the next council meeting. And I would like to request that instead of bringing that for action, that we bring that for discussion, because I have some things that I'd like to discuss before we make some decisions.
You want to discuss it one more time and then see if...
Yes.
I know that was kind of Mr. Bucknight's issue, but I can't speak for him. I can't imagine he would mind. I don't know. Counsel, what do y'all think? One more time, under items from council, before we bring in a...
Discussion's fine.
Y'all think that's okay?
That's good.
Okay. I don't think he'd mind. We can do that. I know we want to discuss it as much as possible before we rush into anything, so, okay. All right, we've got "Christmas on the Square." When is that coming up? November 30th. I've got the little flyer here, so let's make sure we get that, get the word out to that. So, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Dealey-on-Plaza. And I'll just read off the flyer. So, enjoy Snowzilla Junior Slide, Giant Snow Globe, Hot Cocoa and Cookies, food and merchandise, vendors in the petting zoo. So, I hope everybody comes out to that.
And just for, if you don't mind, and Danielle could talk about, but a new twist this year, there's going to be vendors down there, so, you know, that will have Christmas goods. Danielle, you want...
We designed out of notice to kind of get some draw for the arts and crafts vendors and food vendors, so we're going to have a mix of both. Right now, we're sitting at about 28 arts and crafts food vendors, six food vendors. And so, we're... It's going to be a nice turnout. Nothing too big, but a good start.
And Santa Claus and be there?
Yeah, Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus for free pictures. And you can also get inside the snow globe and take pictures as well.
Okay. All right. So, that's the Friday night. Then, the next day is the Christmas parade, right? So, at 6:00 PM, Saturday, December 1st. I know everybody, we wouldn't miss that, right? Okay. Looking forward to those things. Also, we have some good information or good news about the Parks Department. You want to share that with us, Colby?
Be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were informed today that the Marcia Shanklin Foundation has committed just over $300,000 to a splash pad at Riverside Park, and so we're really excited about that. That's a good start on getting that project rolling, and we're thankful for that. They're going to be donating that over a three-year time period with $70,000 this year, $115,000 and $115,000 in the next two years as well. And so, we're really excited about that project. We wanted to inform you.
Where about are you going to put it at?
Right now, we're still looking, but we believe over by the current children's park across the street where Elder, the field used to be for the little people in there.
Out of the flood zone?
It is out of the flood zone.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that's a... generosity is amazing, and I hope that continues...
Especially since I did so much for this, along with the Lee Tracy Foundation on the Tracy Splash Pad. So, we're excited about that. Really excited. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, Colby. Okay, anything else under items from council? Okay, if not, let's move into citizens' communication. If anyone would like to speak to council about anything, now would be the time. Come on up and just give us your name and try to keep your calm in just five minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Jenny Stafford. I'm CEO of MidCoast Family Services, and I live at 210 Wearden. And I heard last week that in South Texas, we experienced all four seasons in a matter of just a couple of days. But I think Victoria can outdo that, because I think we had all four seasons today, from way I left the house this morning till this afternoon. But for most of us, the weather is just an inconvenience or a convenience, either way, depending if you want to go deer hunting or fishing, or you want to just snuggle under the comforter at home. But for some of the folks in our community, the weather is more than just an inconvenience, and it can be a real problem with their health. So, a few years ago, in response to that, Victoria Area Homeless Coalition began the idea of providing a safe and warm place for people who live on the streets, are in places in chicken coops, or barns, or other places that are not meant for human habitation, to get in and out of the cold. So, for the last six to eight years, we've been sponsoring a warming center. And you have to know that we started that, we were working with some representatives from the county health department, because we weren't sure how cold is too cold, and how long can a person be out in the cold before it becomes a problem. So, we took their advice. We used the wind chill factor rather than the actual, and it has to be for a certain length of time and for so many days before we decide that it's time to do the warming center. So, last Monday, we were surprised how quickly the weather turned cold, and we had our first warming center of the season. We were very fortunate to have a couple of churches that believe in the work that we're doing, and we use Pine Street Community Center, which is owned by Trinity Episcopal Church. And they just let it, they give us a key and let us have free rein of the whole place. They have meetings at the same time, and we just kind of work around each other. We have very good participation from our community. We had all of our food donated. We had chili. We had chicken spaghetti. We had a full turkey dinner one night. One morning for breakfast, we had chicken, leftover chicken and biscuits, and it's hard to beat that. All of the people who work there are volunteers. There are people like me and people like Kim Pickens in the back of the room, and there are also people who don't know anything about homeless, and they come there for the first time to meet and to have that experience. And it is an experience. I've never done that work, the schedule, where I didn't come out knowing more than when I went in. So, last Monday, we... There were 18 people that slept there. The next night, there were 22 people, and the following night, there were 24 people. We believe there's at least that many important people that didn't come in, for whatever reason, because of transportation, because of fear, which is actually one of the problems, because we don't let them bring their animal. And there are some people who wouldn't come in because they won't bring their animal. And we had that place packed. It was a full house with 24 cots in there. And just as a little sidebar there, the Victoria Area's Homeless Coalition doesn't have an office, and we really don't have a budget, and we don't have any paid staff. We're just a member organization of different people without much of a budget. We take lots of hand-me-downs, and we were using hand-me-down Boy Scout cots that they had worn out, but they gave them to us, and we've used them. But thank goodness, we got a nice donation, and we're going to be able to replace those with some nice nylon type cots that won't, that the bottom won't fall out while somebody's trying to get in it or sleep in it. This year, we had no issues. The first night, we had one medical problem where we had to call EMS, and one of our residents or one of our guests was transported to the hospital and had to be admitted there. So, it was a legitimate... The next night, we had a visit from law enforcement, but it was because they had found somebody on the street that needed a warm place. So, we were thankful that we were there to do that. So, why am I here? You can't support what you don't know about. Because this is a community effort, and it's not anything that's done by any one organization, we need you to support our efforts, whether it's just to understand it and maybe bring us a pot of chili next time, but to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. We have no ulterior motives except to serve these folks, and it gives us a wonderful opportunity to sit down across the table from them and hear what's going on. There were several that were in our office the next day and have already applied for services. They didn't know we were there until we had the chance to sit down across the table or across a bowl of chili and talk about it. So, I thank you for... I know some of you have brought donations in the past of blankets and coats and those things, and I thank you for that. But I urge you to continue to believe in the work that we're doing and that those folks deserve a warm place. It's really tough the next morning when it's cold to send them away, but they do have the opportunity to go to Christ Kitchen, will open up their doors early, and the library as well, where they'll go and hang out and they'll warm. So, thank you for that. My time is up, and I'll be around if anybody has any questions.
Ms. Stafford, I do.
I think...
Real quick, so if someone wanted to donate, what's the best way? Y'all have a Facebook page, right?
We do have a Facebook page, which a couple of us don't do a great job of managing, but we do our best. But if you call our office at MidCoast, in fact, we just took a whole bunch of blankets to the Pine Street location. They let us store things there for the next time.
Okay, so the...
We can handle that. We can make sure it gets to the right place.
The Victoria Area Homeless Coalition is separate from MidCoast.
It is. It is.
They don't have a board, or are they a 501(c)(3)?
They do have a board. Their board president is actually our Director of Homeless Services.
Okay.
So, it's really closely intertwined, but we'll see that it gets to the right place. They are a 501(c)(3).
Oh, excellent. Okay, and they have a treasurer and all that process set up.
They have a treasurer, right.
So, call MidCoast if someone wants to donate and specify.
And talk to Lisa.
Okay, good. I've seen some fundraisers on Facebook, social media for them.
Right. Yeah, that's a separate entity completely.
Okay. Thank you for what you do.
Sure. Thank you. And let's pray for no more cold weather.
Okay, citizens' communication is still open?
Since Jenny pointed out that I was here, I was going to come up here anyway. My name is Kim Pickens. I'm at 812 Blythe Road in the great city of Victoria, and I just wanted to... And I'll piggyback off of what she said. The Victoria Area Homeless Coalition is a 501(c)(3). There is, on the Facebook page, there is a link to go directly to the Homeless Coalition account. So, feel free to click on that and donate, or if you have items, get with MidCoast. I'm actually here partially for talking about the homeless, but as a member of the library board, but also as somebody who grew up going to our library and spending hours there. My mom used to have to pull me away from the library. It's very important for me and for my family, a family of seven who uses the library all the time. So, the issue that was brought up by Councilman Bucknight, which I wish he was here, but hopefully he'll watch, basically, you know, some of the things that he brought up were of concern to me, like having an ID to walk into the library. You know, as a public, as a publicly funded and taxpayer, you know, entity, you know, we don't ask people for ID to go to the park, a city park, and things like that. And if I go to New York and want to go and visit their library, you know, that's an open thing. Like, there should not be a barrier to that. So, I was a bit concerned when he mentioned a barrier to, you know, being able to ID people at the door. And the other issue of keeping a credit card or debit card on file when you sign up was a bit concerning in this age of, you know, online fraud and things like that. It just seems like it opens up doors to a lot of things that we really don't want to be opened up. You know, I'm lucky that the library, you know, whenever I do have a fine, and I was the first one to admit in our last board meeting that I've got kids, and sometimes they forget to turn in their things. And so, I'm the first to admit I have fines. So, like I said, you know, the idea of amnesty is actually very attractive, although I don't think my fines are quite that high, maybe about the $2 range. But for people who, in Harvey, the first thing that, if they had library things, they didn't, that wasn't the first thing they thought of, was I need to take my library book back. They thought, I need to get out of here. So, I think that the idea of amnesty once a year is a good thing to be able to get items back or to get people to not be afraid to walk through the door. I talked to another mom after that council meeting and mentioned that, you know, the idea of amnesty. And she said, well, you know, we have, we lost a book. And she was like, and I haven't, we haven't gone back in. And I was like, well, you know, you can go back in, you know, you just need to talk to somebody. So, you know, for somebody who is worried about that and who basically has stopped from coming to the library, bringing their kids to, you know, be able to access information, that was kind of concerning to me, that she was actually afraid to walk in. And I'm like, they're not going to arrest you. And I know that we've had issues in the past, but since that, we're no longer submitting things to the municipal court where you can be, you know, where you can end up in jail. Like I said, I think there's still that worry. So, you know, I would like to try to, you know, lower as many barriers as possible as opposed to build them up. The public library is one of the great equalizers. It doesn't matter what your socioeconomic background is, what your gender, what your race. Like I said, anybody can go in and access the exact same information. So, like I said, I think it's important to all of us to treasure that spot. And the library staff does an amazing job, and it's not just because I'm on the board. I'm on the board because I wanted it to be an amazing thing and continue. They do an amazing job of actually looking at what the community needs and that space. Like I said, if you haven't gone in lately, just go and sit. It's just, it is an amazing place. And the things they have on the agenda for the future, to be able to make it an additional community space, to incorporate more of us is just, I mean, like I said, it's, they do a phenomenal job. So, I always, you know, have to tip my hat to them. Dana does a great job with her staff, and they're very creative. I know one of the other issues he brought up was homeless, that, you know, that he'd gotten a complaint, Mr. Bucknight had gotten a complaint about someone complaining about someone who's homeless. And, you know, the homeless folks that go in there are usually the first people to actually, like, tell you where things are, because they know where everything is. There's no one more well-read than someone who has nothing but time on their hands. And Jenny and I can attest that the first time we did a warming center, we actually spent the night talking to a man about Shakespeare. And I mean, it was so far above my head. I was just like, okay, well, that's, you know, you just, it's amazing. So, like I said, we need to treasure our public entities. And so, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that, you know, that we need to support it, and I appreciate your time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pickens, and thanks for serving on the library board and the other work you do in the community. It's appreciated. Citizens' communication still open? Okay, seeing no one get up, we'll close citizens' communication. And we have three items. The first two have public hearings. The third one does not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, the first, C1, is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victoria, Texas, related to the disaster declaration issued by Mayor Paul Pelosi on August 24th, 2017, in response to Hurricane Harvey, extending the temporary waiver of certain fees for the collection of brush and bulky items and certain building permit fees for residential properties with damage caused by Hurricane Harvey, and declaring an emergency and providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
Let's open the public hearing on C1. If anyone would like to speak just to this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, we'll... Oh, we got to take her. Okay. You know, it crossed my mind that you might want to... I know you're involved with this.
I didn't realize it was on that. So, we are still working with Rio, Texas Conference. We're still in the midst of the Harvey recovery through the FEMA project called the DCMP. So, that contract runs through August of 2019. So, at least until then, we anticipate it will be prolonged, that it will be extended, that... But as of right now, the grant that we're working runs through that. So, we know that we have lots more houses in the Victoria County area and the city of Victoria specifically. So, we would definitely, you know, love to see that extended, so that way homeowners are not, who are still recovering from Harvey, do not have the burden of that fee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing's still open. If anyone else... Okay, seeing none, I'll close a public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. And just as a reminder, that's the long-term recovery group.
Recovery group, yeah.
And Ms. Lee brought that to our attention. Y'all still have some, we'll say it in a non-legal way when you read that, those, the long-term recovery group of which I guess Ms. Pickens is part of, they all still have some homes. It's your people you're helping. We're waiving the fee for the debris pickup for... Okay. Okay, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, ayes have it. C2.
C2 is an ordinance amending the 2018-2019 budget of the City of Victoria and carrying forward encumbrances outstanding at September 30th, 2018, declaring an emergency, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing on C2. If anyone would like to speak to this. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and second. Nothing new here? Any discussion or questions? We do this every year. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you. C3.
Item C3 is the item that is a second and third reading, so will not need a public hearing tonight. It is an ordinance adding Section 24-74 to Chapter 24 of the Victoria Code of Ordinances to allow for an annual amnesty period to forgive fines and fees accrued on overdue materials, providing for publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Ms. Dana's ready to answer them.
I just wanted to get clarification on the amnesty period. Did we decide that's going to be up to you, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Another tool in your toolbox. All right. No further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda.
There are seven items on the consent agenda that tonight will be approved by a single vote. They are, first, the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of October 30th, 2018, and the regular meeting of November 6th, 2018. Second, a resolution appointing a new member to the Building and Standards Commission and declaring an effective date. Third, a resolution approving the purchase of protective clothing for the Victoria Fire Department from municipal energy services in the amount of $49,590, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. Number four is a resolution approving the purchase of fleet, city fleet vehicles and other equipment from various vendors utilizing government cooperative contracts for a total amount of $2,126,605.59, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchases and declaring an effective date. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal agreement with A.J. Shredding to provide mowing services for specified areas around Loop 463 in the amount of $56,000 and declaring an effective date. The sixth is a resolution authorizing the city manager to pay $114,324.67 to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for the annual consolidated water quality assessment fee for the city's wastewater treatment plants and declaring an effective date. And the seventh is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Civil Corps LLC for surveying services for the North Heights Utility Improvements Phase 6 Project in the amount of $66,000 and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit multiple FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program applications, committing the city to provide local matching funds, appointing the city manager as the chief executive officer, and authorize a representative to act in all matters in connection with the program, and declaring an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Okay, seeing none?
When do we get the money?
Don Colletto Cristobal.
Cut to the chase.
I'm even going to try to answer that question. I really, I don't have, I don't have a schedule. We really don't know.
It is...
That wasn't that serious a question.
Well...
Fairly open-ended process.
It's FEMA. It's FEMA, the federal government. So, don't hold your breath, but...
I do have in my report later, I have some updated information that actually applies to a couple of these projects as well, so, in another program.
Okay. Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. E2.
Item E2 is a resolution accepting donated funds from the Victoria 100 Club in the amount of $13,680 to be used for training Victoria Fire Department personnel in tactical paramedicine, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept this donation and declaring an effective date.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, motion and second. What is tactical paramedicine?
Great question, Mary. Counsel, good evening. What that'll allow us to do is to train our paramedics, a certain group, to be able to deploy with our PD SWAT team. So, they're right there in case something happens. They're able to render aid to the law enforcement officer or to whoever they're serving the high-risk warrant on. So, it's just an additional training that allows them to deploy and equip them to be, to go in with the SWAT teams.
Is this new? Do they not normally do that?
No, they do not normally do that. We stage some distance away in a very safe area, and it does create a delay in case something does happen. This will be a new program where they're embedded with the SWAT teams.
Interesting. Very good.
Just want to say, once again, thank you to the 100 Club. They're always so generous. We're very fortunate to have such a outstanding 100 Club in Victoria.
Very well said. I was just noticing that. They seem to pop up on our agenda frequently with their generosity. Is there anyone here from the 100 Club?
I don't think that could make it a day call.
Okay, yeah, that's wonderful. Okay, any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Number three.
Item E3 is a resolution approving the first payment of motor oil solutions for the 2016 purchase of radios in the amount of $739,556.25, and the purchase of APX radio management software using a $30,000 credit, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make the payment and complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's good equipment, isn't it? Very good.
Great equipment.
I just got a little sticker shock, but I know that this stuff has to work. This is critical to what, public safety. So, it's, yeah.
Yes, we agree. It's mission critical, and I don't think the police and fire, they definitely need that kind of level of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, very good. Okay, any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. City manager reports.
John has the first one to talk about CDBGDR funding.
Thank you. Good evening again. My topic tonight is the CDBGDR program. This acronym stands for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. I'm going to shorten that acronym to CDR, because I have to say it too many times. We've known for the better part of a year that the city was going to receive distributions of Hurricane Harvey CDR funds. But to give you a quick background, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, allocated a little over $5 billion in CDR funds to the state of Texas in response to Harvey. The Texas General Land Office is responsible for administering the program at the state level. Earlier this year, the GLO developed a state action plan for these funds, which is a HUD requirement, and a method of distribution to divide the funds among the various regional councils of government throughout the Harvey Declared Disaster area. In our region, the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission developed the method of distribution to distribute funds among the various cities and counties throughout the Golden Crescent region. We've now received the official notification of the funding amounts, the approved funding amounts, and we've notified the GLO of our intent to apply for those funds. The city's been awarded $6,56,722 in the local infrastructure program, and $2,441,508 in the local buyout and acquisition program. The good news is, these funds have been set aside for the city of Victoria. We don't have to compete for these grant funds. The program, however, does come with its own set of challenges. The GLO is not going to send us a check for $8.5 million and say, get to work. We have to apply for the funds, and our application will need to identify projects that conform to HUD regulations, HUD guidelines. For example, under this program, and this is unique to the Hurricane Harvey CDR funding, 70% of program funds must be spent on projects that benefit low-to-moderate-income areas or individuals. For the infrastructure program, that's 4.2 million of the total 6 million. And generally speaking, these projects need to be located in census block groups that are at least 51, where at least 51% of the households are low to moderate income. These are the same areas where we're able to spend our regular annual CDBG dollars under our CDBG program. Some of the other requirements, each CDR activity must address a Harvey-related impact. We can't spend money to replace, repair, or harden infrastructure that was not affected by Harvey. There has to be some nexus making, some nexus between the project and the declared disaster. And also, each CDR project must be for a CDBG, a regular CDBG-eligible activity, and all the standard CDBG regulations apply unless modified by a federal register notice. To get a little more detail, two projects that we are considering as candidates for the CDR infrastructure funding will be familiar to you, because we've talked about them recently. These are the Floodgate Replacement Project and the Stormwater Pump Station Project. We're currently doing pre-application work for both of these projects. We're currently doing pre-application work for both of these projects for possible FEMA hazard mitigation funding, but we're finding that they may be a better fit under the CDR guidelines. If we confirm that to be the case, and we believe it will be, there are a couple of advantages to be gained. One is that we may be able to expand the scope of these projects to include additional drainage improvements that we probably would not be able to do through the FEMA mitigation program. Secondly, and equally important, the CDR program covers 100% of the project costs where the FEMA programs require a 25% local match. So we are currently pursuing that possibility. We think there is a very strong possibility that they may be our two leading projects in the CDR infrastructure side of the program. That's just a very high-level overview of the infrastructure part. We're just getting started. We're learning every day more about the program, and we will continue to update you as things move further along. I mentioned that we are also receiving a distribution of $2.4 million in the CDR buyout program. Again, the standard CDBG regulations apply here. In addition, there are two very basic criteria that a property has to meet in order to qualify for the program. One, the property must be located in a designated floodplain or floodway. And two, the property must have sustained damage from the disaster event, in this case Hurricane Harvey. Now, I want to qualify my next statement by saying this is based on a verbal communication, a verbal response from a GLO representative of the CDR program, and I'm waiting for a written confirmation. However, this is our current understanding. While in order for a property to qualify, it must have sustained damage during Harvey, but the damage does not have to have been caused by flooding. This is a very critical distinction in our case. Houston and the surrounding region experienced just widespread massive flooding. There will be no shortage of candidates for the buyout program in those jurisdictions. We had flooding, but it wasn't widespread. We had a relatively small number of homes that were actually damaged by rising water, by flooding from rising water as a result of Harvey. But we had the wind. There were many more homes that sustained significant water damage, water intrusion that resulted from wind damage, roof damage and other structural damage caused by wind. And many of these homes are located within floodplain and floodway areas. The roofs can be repaired, the wind damage can be repaired, but those homes are still vulnerable to future floods, which leaves a sizable pool of potential buyout participants, more than we expected when we first started thinking about this program. The next steps, during our application process, first we'll identify the areas to be targeted. This is a requirement of the program. In our case, it would be the floodplain and floodway areas adjacent to the Guadalupe River. Yes, sir?
Question, go back just a minute. Okay, so traditionally, we know that homes in the low-lying areas that flooded and historically they've been in buyouts. I remember the 98 flood. What you're saying is the wind-driven rain that impacted areas not in those low-lying areas would be eligible?
Only area, only homes within floodplains and floodways that receives storm damage from Harvey. It could be flooding.
Floodplain and floodway?
Floodplain and floodway. Anything within the 100-year floodplain, which includes a floodway, which is the area closer to the channel.
I just wanted to make the point that, you know, the event of the wind-driven rain is fairly rare while some of the, we still have some structures that just repeatedly flood every single time, and I know the objective is to try to stop that.
Correct.
Okay, so when those applications and choices are made, you guys know, you know, we're gonna, there are homes that are gonna flood again.
Absolutely.
No question.
There will be another 98 flood. There will be a flood worse than the 98 flood.
As opposed to wind-driven rain effects of.
Correct.
I think that's my point.
It's a very unique situation to be able to apply this funding in this manner. So we are still working to get that clarified, but I got a very black and white verbal answer from the GLO with my GrantWorks representative as a witness earlier, or last week or earlier this week, and we will get that in writing.
But yeah, you know how far that'll go, right?
And it is fairly, in the guidelines that we receive from the GLO, they're right on the GLO website. It very clearly in their guidelines states that the two criteria are to be located within a floodplain or floodway and to have sustained damage from the disaster event, period. It doesn't say flood damage. And they are interpreting it in that manner. So, again, we'll identify those areas geographically. They are the same areas that we targeted after the 98 flood. The same neighborhoods, they're all the neighborhoods that fall within the floodplain boundaries of the Guadalupe River that are within the city limits. The next thing we'll do is develop a program design. I do want to mention one notable advantage with the, that the CDR buyout program has when compared to the buyouts that we undertook after the 98 flood. The 98 flood buyout was a FEMA hazard mitigation project. We acquired 89 properties through that process, but we, we know there were many others who qualified, who chose not to participate. They declined our offers to buy out the properties. Many of them went ahead and repaired their homes, and in order to repair them, they elevated them above the base flood elevation. So some of those folks are not going to be interested no matter what. However, we believe that one of the most common reasons that people turned down the buyout opportunity after 98 was the fact that we were only able to offer them the appraised fair market value for their property. And in many cases, it simply was not enough money to make it feasible for them to seek replacement housing outside of the floodplain. They just stuck with what they had because they weren't going to get enough money for their house to move somewhere else. We think there was a very large number of those folks. We talked to them, I know there are. How many of them are still living in these areas? I don't know, but we'll, I think we'll soon enough find out. The difference is with CDR, in addition to paying the pre-storm fair market value for the property, we can offer incentives, including down payment, down payment assistance and other replacement housing incentives. This could help lift some applicants over that housing cost threshold and make it more practical to find housing outside of flood hazard areas. Finally, as with the FEMA buyout program, we all know any property that we acquired will be demolished, cleared and maintained as permanent open space, which is the overarching purpose of the program, is to remove residents from harm's way and to reduce the potential for repetitive loss from future floods, because again, we said, it's going to happen again. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer, or at least do the best I can to answer any questions that you have tonight.
A lot of these areas in the flood zones that were outlined in 98, when I was here, I was with the city. It seemed like there was not enough education and community outreach. Are we gonna have like a committee to reach some of these low-income residents in these areas to let them know that these, this grant's gonna be available? Do we have plans for that, or how are we gonna approach that, these people that?
I think John should also explain what they did last time to educate.
We did. It was a pretty, we made a pretty significant effort to get the word out to those folks and had some very large public forums at the Community Center Annex, literally with hundreds of people over several meetings attending, but yeah, you're, it is difficult to reach everybody. Not everybody's watching the TV, not everybody's reading the Advocate, you know. But as part of our program design, one of the things we'll be doing is developing a public involvement process, a plan for getting the word out involving the public and reaching folks that will benefit potentially from the program. It's an integral part of the program design.
John, housing is an issue here. Is there sufficient housing for these people if they buy out and move?
I think it's always an issue. I mean, we're not talking about hundreds of people. So I think we're, the numbers of units that we're talking about in mid-range, you know, mid-price housing that would be replacement for the homes that we're addressing, I think it's there, you know, it's not readily available. There's not 100 of them to choose from. But, you know, I think we put them in a better position, having that, the acquisition money and being able to buffer that or add to that, the down payment assistance. There are some other ways of going about providing relocation assistance. And I wasn't going to get into this, but let me do it anyway. Part of our program design, one of the local decisions that we'll have to make is, are we going to only offer this program to homeowners? Are we going to offer it to rental properties, to landlords? You don't have to do both. You make, we'll make a local decision which route to take. Folks that have way more expertise with these programs than I do generally recommend that you stick with owner-occupied applicants. The reason is, as soon as you determine in your program design that you're going to offer buyouts to landlords, to for rental properties, your project becomes regulated by the Uniform Relocation Act, and that's forever. It is much more difficult to administer than the typical HUD programs for homeowner assistance, for example, homebuyer assistance, down payment assistance. It's a decision we'll have to make. We'll analyze it. We'll look at the percentages of owner occupancy in rental properties within the areas and make recommendations to you. But it is a decision that you'll be faced with as we put together the program.
John, we're still mowing many of the lots we bought out.
All of them.
From the flood of 98. We will till time ends.
That's correct.
Which is another burden upon the city of having to mow these things. Over the years, we've tried various schemes of seeing if the neighbors wanted to rent the vacant lot next door to them as a garden plot or any other things, with very limited success. It's just something to bring in a little bit of something as opposed to having to mow it.
I would say out of the, out of the 89 properties, we have somewhere in the ballpark of 15 that are leased to adjacent property owners.
And I would have thought.
But yeah, it's very limited. We still, and yes, we're responsible for those that are not being leased by someone who, and most of those are actually to one individual who's using for grazing, adjacent to some agricultural land. But yeah, it's, it's, it will be our responsibility to maintain those properties forever.
They'll be adding to that list of properties people have to mow or deal with.
And that's the price of removing those hazards from the flood hazard area and removing those homes.
Can those lots be built on?
No, sir.
Never? Under no circumstances?
No, sir. There's a program, when I first mentioned our allocations, I called the program the Local Buyout and Acquisition Program. The reason is, under the, under the CDR program, there are actually two different ways you can do it. One is called the Buyout Program, one's called Acquisition. We don't think the Acquisition option is really a viable option for the city of Victoria. It's kind of a unique circumstance where, first of all, you can only offer the owner post hurricane appraised value. And, but you can use that property for redevelopment. You can make that property available for redevelopment. Well, in our floodplain, in particular our floodway areas, the last thing we want to do is make those properties available for redevelopment. The purpose is to get them out of there, to reduce the risk of future flood damages, future costs, future losses. And again, you're not likely going to find very many people that are going to be willing to sell you their properties for post-disaster value. Whereas on the Buyout Program, you can offer pre-disaster value.
So John, tonight, information sharing, next steps?
We begin, we're working with GrantWorks, identifying potential projects, developing those projects, just making sure we're comfortable which ones are going to fit the criteria. We'll begin soon developing our program scope, the way that we're going to design the program, and all those steps will be coming back to you for your input. The current, currently, as it stands, the application deadline is January 31st. We expect that we will request an extension of that deadline and have been given every indication that extensions will be granted. We think we're going to probably need several more months to get all this put together and submitted for a successful application. But GrantWorks is coordinating this for us throughout the whole process.
A question. This is a really exciting program because it's certainly a lot different than the flood of 98. But I know that those are family homes. They've been in families for generations, and that's one of the reasons that people didn't want to leave. And in everything that you've talked about, and because some of these homes really weren't reflooded, I'm wondering about the potential of moving the homes and whether there's, you talked about down payment assistance and things like that. Is there any flexibility in those guidelines? You probably don't know, but that, because if we're going to demolish them, that we could buy the, buy the property and have the people actually move the homes elsewhere?
I don't have the answer, but it's something we'll investigate.
I just invite you to look at that.
And that was another factor in families that chose not to accept a buyout. It's three generations have lived in the home, and they have, they don't want to go anywhere else, you know. Well, it's been 20 years. Some of those situations, those homes have been passed down to other generations. Some may have been sold over the years. So there may be different circumstances. There may be some folks that just didn't want to do it after 98, but maybe ready. Maybe they're tired of the inconvenience of these now more than annual floods we seem to be having.
John, excuse me, one of the questions that I would have would be, does this program allow the buyout and the people to keep the money, or they have to turn around and buy another house?
There's no requirement that they turn around and buy another house. Now, if we give them the homebuyer assistance, you know, down payment assistance, obviously that would need to be used for that purpose. And I believe it's, there's an amount of time that that would have to be done. But if they choose to sell the property to us, go rent somewhere, whatever other option they choose, that's their decision. It's completely up to them.
Because there's a program in Houston that's very similar that I know somebody took advantage of it. But the thing was that, I guess it was like in the flood of 98, their place got flooded. Then they didn't move. Some of the people sold across from them, you know, so now they have more access to the waterfront. So after the third time around, they were told you either accept a buyout, but they weren't given the money. The money was given directly to purchase another house. So I'm just wondering if it's, because it was a state program too, so, but this is a federal program.
It is. Administered by the state, but it's a federal program.
Okay, so when you mentioned the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission, are they going to administer that for us? Or are we doing it? They have the funds and we're going to administer it?
No, Golden Crescent's only role in this process was to develop the method of distribution to divide up the funds among the various entities, the cities and counties.
Okay, because I know that we talked about something where the people would apply directly to the general land office. This is not the same program, right?
It is the same program. It is different pots of money. So the only programs that are being administered by cities and counties through this method of distribution that flowed through the state, through the Golden Crescent and to us, is for infrastructure and buyouts. There are several other programs, there are several other categories of funding within that CDBGDR allocation, within that $5 billion. And those are the direct benefit, the direct homeowner housing programs. So the Homeowner Assistance Program, which is to repair or rebuild homes. The Homeowner Reimbursement Program, which I believe is to reimburse folks who took money out of retirement to repair their homes and want to be able to get reimbursement for that. And then there are several others. Those programs are being administered directly by the GLO. That money is not flowing through the regional councils. It's not flowing through the cities and counties. Those types of programs used to be administered by cities and counties. They're not under this disaster. They're directly under the influence or responsibility of the GLO. Now, they're subcontracting a lot of that work out. In fact, GrantWorks has a contract to do a lot of that for the GLO in this region. But those applications go directly to the GLO. We have no involvement.
It's a very complex issue, and I know John's doing a great job managing it, but it's fluid, and I said we have to be nimble, so. but it's fluid, and I said we have to be nimble, so.
I'm very glad you're there.
Yes.
Thank you. I've learned way more about this than I ever thought, thought I would ever want to.
And you actually sound a little interested in that.
I think I will continue. I know there's way more that I don't know than I've heard so far.
I think I followed what you said, so that must have been a good report.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, John. Okay, April, do you have the next item?
Yes, sir. The appointment of Tom Halapaska, Lee Keeling, and Decatur Joseph on the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board is going to expire at the end of December. All three of them have expressed a desire to be reappointed and are eligible for reappointment. We do have another applicant. Helen Walker has submitted her application as well. And so we're going to be bringing a resolution before the council on the December fourth meeting. Now, Mr. Halapaska is one of our two council representatives on that board, so, you know, it would have to, one of the appointments would have to be a council member.
Okay, so it's just informational, and you'll bring all that back?
Yes, and on my CM one, there was an error. The correct date for the next appointment after this one would be for December thirty-first of 2020, not 2019. It's a two-year appointment.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gush, Julie?
Yes, and before they get started, just a reminder to council and the public, you know, we had the October thirtieth joint meeting between City Council and Planning to talk about Unified Development Code, what our framework would be to develop that code. And we talked about Chapter two-eleven and Chapter two-twelve, and pros and cons of that. So we said we would bring it back tonight. We're looking for nod of the head consensus of how we want to move forward with the committee to develop the code, what the framework will be. And I know Thomas is going to do just kind of a brief overview since we went through it last a few weeks ago. Hopefully, we can come up with a decision on how to manage that. And then we have a committee that's appointed and will be working on this. I know I've talked to Julie. This is probably a two-year process. This is not something that's going to happen in the next few months. We, we chose not to outsource it. We're doing it with staff and with volunteers on the committee to work on it. But at the end of the day, it's all got to come back to be approved by city council. There's nothing that staff can do from an approval process, so, okay. I teed you up.
Yes, you did. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. And I will say, I think the city manager was cribbing from my notes. I was writing down what I was going to say, and I think she hit almost all of the points that I was going to make, reminding you where we've been, why we've come here. The goal is to establish what will be the underlying framework. You know, it was Commissioner Atkinson at the Planning Commission when we talked about this a week ago, who described it as that framework, and I think it was a good illustration. We can build the Unified Development Code on different frameworks. And the option in front of you tonight, what we're asking for guidance on tonight is which of those frameworks we want to build the code on. And so your options, there are two of them in front of you tonight. The first is to continue with what we currently have on the books, Chapter two-twelve, which allows the city to regulate plats and development of subdivisions. We would need to add in Subchapter B, which would allow us to regulate development plats. We believe that option would be more complicated and time consuming for developers, and ultimately more expensive. The other option is for us to expand and also adopt Chapter two-eleven of the local government code, which is titled Municipal Zoning Regulation. And I know that some people are uncomfortable with the word zoning, and that's why we wanted to come before council and make sure we had buy-in before we spent those two years that Charmel's describing, doing the work and drafting the code. And so tonight really is an opportunity for council to give us feedback and give us direction before we start that work of drafting the code. We're not necessarily getting into tonight the details of what that code will look like, what exactly those regulations will say. We anticipate they will be very similar to what's currently on the books. That being said, I would like some guidance and some feedback from council members regarding that. Two things I want to hit before we start, if I may. First, I want to reiterate, we are not proposing zoning maps. We're not proposing zoning districts. The traditional thinking about zoning is that the city is going to draw polygons on a map, and I will be able to do some things in the first polygon and other things in the second polygon, and the city's going to tell me what I can do with my property. That is not what we're proposing. Remember, what we described it is bulk zoning or bulk regulation zoning as a way of applying our existing regulatory framework through the zoning chapter to give us more direct enforcement authority. We are not proposing zoning maps. And second, it was a great question that was asked, and I think it was Councilmember Solis who asked it to me, who said, is this going to get us a step closer to adopting those zoning maps if we allow you to go forward with this methodology today? If we come back and approve Chapter two-eleven later, are we going to be one step closer to zoning? And the answer is no. If the city council wanted to go forward today with adopting zoning maps, there's two steps that would have to happen. We'd have to have a public hearing and a vote to adopt Chapter two-eleven and zoning maps. If we adopt Chapter two-eleven through this process without adopting zoning maps, and then later change our mind, it'll take two steps, a public hearing and a vote of city council. It's the same two steps later. And so when people ask what's preventing us from later adopting zoning maps, the answer is you, city council members, who answer to the public. And I'm sure have been hearing from the public recently about how you want us to move forward. And so I look forward to hearing your questions and comments tonight.
Okay, remember I promised you I was going to see how many times in two-eleven the word zoning is in there?
You said you were going to count, did you?
There was eighty-eight times. So you can't tell me that you're going to adopt something that says zoning eighty-eight times and tell me it's not a zoning law. It baffles the mind for a document to say that word so many times. And, you know, it's like, hello, I'm here. And I don't appreciate it, so I think that we could work with two-twelve B to be able to get past this. You're going to have enforcements? Are you willing to go and put people in jail because they didn't do something? I know that we're looking for authority, but I don't think that we need to go to that step because it is a misdemeanor. So, you know, you're, you're putting more work on the police force, it's already overburdened.
Yes, ma'am. And, and thank you for bringing it up. We did have a conversation where you said that you would be doing that. And we are not shying away from the fact that Chapter two-eleven is the zoning ordinance. That is the state law that provides cities zoning authority. And we are absolutely trying to be clear with the public that that is what we are adopting. The difference is in the way we intend to apply it. Julie may want to jump in here more, but remember, we are not proposing zoning districts or zoning maps.
So the way we're proposing to apply it is how we currently apply it with those bulk regulations that we've talked about, the setbacks, lot size, all of those things. If we continue to stay with the two-twelve, and especially adopt the Subchapter B, all of the site plans that we regulate now currently through our process, where, you know, a property owner wants to come and develop a property, they go through the site plan process, and that's an internal staff review process where we make sure that, you know, the correct number of parking spaces are applied, you know, that there's the correct amount of landscaping. If we adopt Subchapter B of two-twelve, those site plans then have to become development plats. So they have to go to a surveyor, and they have to go to Planning Commission to be approved. And so that's, that's the shift of what we're, we feel like is really would be too burdensome to move forward with doing Subchapter B.
So under two-eleven, you will not have to pay for a survey or plat, which is probably on a typical property, four thousand dollars? I don't know what it costs anymore.
That'd be a cheap one.
Four to five thousand. I know plat is expensive.
It's costly, because there's a lot of surveying involved. So Subchapter B was developed in the state law after we adopted our ordinance. And so that's why there's sort of that discrepancy right now. So if we're talking about updating our ordinance and making sure that everything is in compliance with state law, we need to convert those site plans to development plats. And so that's where you're adding time and money, and a substantial amount.
And if I may, before we get too far away from Councilman Solis's question, if I can go back to one of the things you said about the enforcement authority and the fact that there are criminal violations and potentially throwing people in jail. I don't want to leave that on the table without addressing the fact that city regulatory authority does not extend to a class B misdemeanor which allows people to be put in jail, all right? We're not talking jail time, and I don't want the general public to think that when we use that word regulatory authority, we're talking about putting people in jail, okay?
I think this all, you know, it hinges on the fact that we're talking about planning. And, and planning, we want to be smart, and we want to treat everybody equally. We've had some discussion about predictability. And that's what we're trying to get to, is that everybody can see what they're going to be required to do, what the expectations are for them, and for their neighbors, and for people across town, and that everybody would be treated equally everywhere across town. One of the things that you started talking about was the framework. Well, basically, we've already, we've built the code, but we've, we've built it without the framework holding it up. And we're, we're basically explaining that, that we've already got everything in place, we just don't have the skeleton underneath it.
The legal framework.
Right, the, the legal framework.
The legal standing.
And I think it's, I think that it's something we probably should have done a long time ago. And it's just, now that we're working on the Unified Development Code, it makes sense.
Yes, ma'am, I, I think that's an apt description, and that's sort of why I titled our initial presentation two weeks ago, "The Foundations of Law." We really need to shore up our foundation and solidify the basis that all of this is standing on.
If...
Oh, I was going to say, you know, you spoke, when, Thomas, when did the framework come about? Because you talked about laying it on the framework, but we actually had our laws locally. The framework came afterwards from a state level, didn't it?
The last time that we modified wholesale our development code was nineteen ninety-two. And it was only shortly after we adopted our code that the development plat portion became available to us. And so at the time we adopted our code, we couldn't have adopted Subchapter B. It was bracketed solely to Houston. Now, we do have that authority, and if that's the direction that council wishes to go, let us know. We believe it's better for the city if we go ahead and take the leap and adopt Chapter two-eleven, the zoning authority, which gives us direct regulatory authority without requiring those plats.
I do agree with Ms. Solis in, in regards to the, I, I didn't like reading zoning, zoning, zoning. The, the problem I also have is, I think that ninety-eight percent of the rest of Texas, and then probably the, the legal people that wrote it, don't have a problem with the word zoning. And so they use it a little bit more free than maybe we would be comfortable with.
I still not comfortable.
I know.
Let me read the comparison of zoning with deed restrictions. Zoning, the basis for zoning is the police power of a municipality to protect the health, safety, and public welfare of the community. This is a legislative power exercised by a government entity. A deed restriction is, the basis for deed restriction is the right of private contract. Property owners may consent to the encumbrance of their real estate rights or real property rights in any manner so as long as it does not violate the law and public policy. So are we taking some of the rights of the people when we go through the zoning? Where in deed restrictions, they still have some rights?
No, ma'am, I wouldn't say that we're taking away rights from people when we adopt zoning. Certainly not their ability to adopt deed restrictions within their own neighborhood. A neighborhood can always choose, at the time that it's being developed, to adopt stricter deed restrictions than the zoning regulations would have in place.
But it's by choice.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would rather give the people the choice.
We don't regulate deed restrictions, though.
That's a...
I mean, we don't, that's, the deed restrictions are up to the subdivision development. We don't, we don't tell developers what to do with deed restrictions, Ms. Solis.
Okay, but still, you know, I, I just...
But currently, we do have a lot of regulations that say how far in the, you know, the part, the building has to be on sides and all of that. So we, you know, we street with, we have a lot of regulations in place.
Again, it, it leads to predictability. If, if you're buying some property or you live in some property and there's vacant property next to you, you have absolutely no idea how it's going to be developed, and you have no control. Your only choice is to pay whatever the price is to buy that adjoining property. That's the only way you can control it. And so you're completely at the mercy of the person that owns it. And because we live inside the city limits, there are regulations that those inside the city limits follow because we're not out in the county. And so we have to have a way to have some predictability and some civility. It's a trade-off for living inside the city limits. So it really is a predictability and a development idea. And my only other thought is whether we can somehow, in our adopting of two-eleven, exclude any, any current plan to make a map, or if there's some wording.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the, that's just the will of the council. Is anyone on council want to adopt zoning? Raise your hand. Okay, now, ten years from now, does anyone want to? I don't know. I don't know who's going to be up here ten years from now. I can't worry about it either. It's, I have a project I'm working on right now, and I'm, and I'm sorry, let me interrupt you, Thomas. What, what can you, we're compelling people to do things. Put up fences, et cetera, et cetera, list is long. I, I'm aware of all that. If, if I buy a piece of property and start working on it, and it's just not necessary to replat it, what can you compel me to do? If I get a good lawyer and challenge you on that, right now?
Our existing code is valid, it's on the books, and it's enforceable, all right? Now, what you're asking about is if you hire a good lawyer and challenge that code, then we could have us a long legal battle in court. And ultimately, a judge could decide that because we don't require plats for your redevelopment, then perhaps our code does not comport with state law, and a judge may choose to overthrow our code.
That's why we're here.
Absolutely.
That's why we're here, okay? I am redoing a building now, and I've opened electrical permits, plumbing permits, roofing permits, construction permits. I know the guys out there know, and I'm doing a good job and doing everything they tell me, but I didn't replat anything. You mean to tell me that I didn't have to do any of that because I didn't replat it technically? That's what the worry is, and I think that's what staff's trying to protect us from. Nobody is interested in zoning at all. Anyone in the audience, raise your hand if you're, well, don't do this. I don't know if any of you are, but I can tell you right now, if, if I went out and tried to tell anybody, we want to adopt zoning and tell you what to do with your property in Victoria, Texas, I'll have to hire security in my house. But again, back to what I'm understanding, unless I don't understand, and I correct you if I'm wrong, there's certain, that legal framework doesn't really exist, it could cause problems for us. I'm going to comply with everything staff tells me, you can bet on that, plus probably, but I've... Am I wrong, Thomas, am I?
No, sir, I think it's an apt description.
And, and I don't want to broadcast to everybody, oh, you don't have to abide by the city ordinances. That's not, but doggone it, let's get it straight, what we're talking about here.
That's where I'll stop you. Citizens do need to abide, to abide by the city ordinances. They are valid, they are on the books, they are enforceable. They are also subject to challenge. And that's what we're trying to clean up as we adopt the next generation worth of Unified Development Code. The last code has been in place, I, I can't do the math, since nineteen ninety-two. How many years is that?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, see, she can do the math. How many years is this going to be on the books? We want to make sure we get it right.
Okay.
Hey, what's to say that somebody cannot come and challenge even if you have two-eleven?
Absolutely nothing, ma'am. Any citizen who has, you know, who has standing can bring a lawsuit against the city, and they absolutely can challenge it. It's my job to draft an ordinance that's going to withstand that challenge. And that's why I'm recommending that we adopt Chapter two-eleven.
Thomas, under two-eleven or two-twelve, right now, you have a special condition with your property. And you go to the Planning Commission, ask for a variance. By the way, the Planning Commission should be called the Variance Commission, because that's mostly what they do. They'll look at the facts of it and say, yes or no, they recommend it. Then that variance comes to council, and we either ratify it or deny it. That's what we're here for. Would it change anything if we were under two-eleven or two-twelve, that procedure of going to the Planning Commission?
State law does require that it go to a zoning board of adjustment. So it would be a separate board, and they would...
So, it would be a separate board, and they would consider the variance under the same exact criteria that you have in our current code. And so, Thomas and I had actually discussions before we even started this, is that you can actually take our, um, I think, the last article of the current ordinance and add the zoning board of adjustment and re-adopt it under 211. And absolutely nothing changes except for the framework of what our code is under.
Except for that one word, everybody's getting hung up on.
Except that one word.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, we're proposing to rewrite the entire ordinance because it needs cleanup. It hasn't been updated since 1992. But if that's a hurdle to get, you know, over the word, we're not talking about changes procedurally that are drastically different than what we do today.
Of the building codes we have, we have Southern Building Code, National Electrical Code, we have the FAR Code, we have Plumbing Code. That's where almost all these rules come from. What actually comes from council? Almost nothing in the last 30 years, in way of ordinances per se, that add to those codes. Now, electrician friend of mine, he thinks as dumb as, as it can be, that we have to put two grounding rods at a, at a, at a, at a cutoff box now instead of one. That's dumb. Doesn't matter. That's the code, still got to do it. Did that come from the city of Victoria? No. GFI's, ground fault interrupters, same thing. They didn't come here. They came from the code that come down from a state or national code. So, the fears of us trying to make restrictive rules on our own citizenry, I don't buy that. It's just not there.
Yeah. That's a good point. I understand what you're saying.
I can't remember us ever doing a rule that would hurt anybody in that manner. It's all just adopting those codes.
Okay, I have another question. You said this process is going to take two and a half years. If we're the body that's going to decide finally, why are we the first ones that have to say yes or no? Why don't we get the input from everybody first before we tell you yea or nay?
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a good question. There will be a decision point later where it's ultimately adopted. But there's a lot of work that has to happen between now and then. And Julie and I are looking for some assurance from the current members of council that that's something that y'all are willing to consider before we put in all of that work.
So, state law of our, allows a municipality to adopt 211, but not to enforce or develop zoning maps? Or zoning districts?
Yes.
And you want consensus tonight to just continue, that's what we're...
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm fine with it.
I am too. No, we...
Need to move forward.
And if there's a council in a few years that talks about zoning, me and Ms. Solis are going to be at that podium, right? I'll call you.
Okay.
I expect Councilman Bocknight will be with you.
Well, let's all have a reunion out there. How's that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think we have our direction.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one other item?
Yes. Uh, we're finished with city manager reports, but I'd like to make an announcement before, uh, Thomas takes us into executive session with his legalese there. So, and the reason I so quickly knew that 1992 was 26 years ago, in 1990, I came to work for the city, which is, so for 28 years, I've been driving down, uh, Main Street, coming down, uh, to City Hall and parking at the, uh, parking lot out front. So, um, I'd like to announce tonight, I've decided to retire and looking forward to my next chapter in life. And, um, I've visited with Paul and looking at retiring in April, which gives city council five months, uh, notice. And hopefully, you can, uh, move forward with finding my successor. And, uh, the department heads, uh, have been told, so they, um, they were expecting this announcement today. And, you know, I, um, I'll be here until the last day in April, uh, on my retirement date. You know, it's, uh, city business as usual, got a lot to continue to do, and looking forward to the next five months of getting that done. Uh, of course, I'll have some vacation time to take off during that time, but I will do it, um, you know, and, uh, make sure the business is moving forward. So, uh, I do have to say, though, uh, quick notes. I saw, um, Mayor, former Mayor Will Armstrong come in the back of the room. I've had a great privilege of working with two mayors, uh, Mayor Armstrong and Mayor Polosik. And it's a true pleasure to work with people that care about this community with all their heart. To do this job is difficult as an elected official because you don't get paid. You get all the criticism, you know, it's, uh, you're doomed if you do and doomed if you don't. But I've also been very privileged to work with each of you council members up here. Short time with Ricky, longer with some of you. Tom and Paul were two of the council members that appointed me at the time that I was appointed almost eight years ago. And I greatly appreciate the support, uh, from you guys. Uh, I'm very proud of the 600-plus employees that get up every day and do the job, uh, that the citizens need, uh, to be done. And they do it with professionalism, a smile on their face. And ti, at most times, without a lot of thanks, you know, it's a job that, uh, we want our citizens to take us for granted for because that means we're doing our job and they're not having to think about what's going on. And, um, my last comment before we move into executive session is, uh, the leadership team that this city has, the 11 department heads that are sitting out there today, Cheryl was on vacation. I told her she didn't need to come, but she's here anyway with her smiling face. This community is very lucky to have the professionals that run the day-to-day operations of those departments. As OC likes to say, we're all pros at what we do. I've been blessed to have John as an assistant city manager helping me with the day-to-day operations. And even though Thomas is not a department head, he's part of that team, and, uh, we work real hard every day to make sure our jobs are done. Whoever takes my place is going to be very fortunate to inherit the leadership team that this, uh, community has and the job that they do every day. So, it's been a wonderful ride. I'm looking forward to my next chapter, um, 28 years with, uh, the city. It's gone by fast. When I started, uh, in 1990, I never dreamed I'd be here that long and have the opportunities to move up in my career. But it is, it's been wonderful. And so, I'm looking forward to watching what we do, but, uh, and seeing where we end up with Chapter 211. Because I will not be in the audience in two years. But thank y'all.
Thank you, Charmel. Just on that note, I've asked, uh, Josie and Jan to, uh, work with me on consulting with the outside search firm. So, counsel, I'm going to make a few phone calls on Monday to some of the search firms. And then, uh, if Jan, if you, Ms. Scott and Ms. Solis will help me, we'll, uh, we'll meet and discuss some of the parameters and pick the, what we think's the best one. And then, of course, in the process going forward, everyone will be involved in different potential candidates. And also, before I forget, I'd like to add an executive session on the next meeting on the 4th so that we could talk about expectations and performance over the next months. She did, Ms. Garrett did say she would work till April, but be careful now, you might make us mad.
It wouldn't be the first time.
Obviously, that, that's not going to happen. And you've been gracious, and, and, and we've discussed that your willingness to assist through this whole process. So, we're very, uh, pleased with that. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm eager to help with a smooth transition.
Thank you.
And I'd like to repeat one thing I've said more than once, and that is, I've told a serving, um, person on council, means I'm just old, that's all that really means. But I've served with three city managers, Denny Arnold, Charles Winryhand, and Charmel Garrett. The most obvious question you might ask me of those three, who was the best? Hands down, it's been Charmel. She's very professional, always has been, and knows how to get the job done.
Thank you.
I will continue that for the next five months.
Tried to get her to say I was the best mayor, but... Anyway, okay. Thank you. We'll, we'll get this process started.
Yes, thank you very much.
Executive session.
The city council will recess into executive session now on, uh, the 20th day of November, 2018, at 6:20 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation or another matter on which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, including but not limited to GBRA litigation.
Do you still think we need to go next door? Do you want to just go in here?
This is fine.
Okay.